Yeah, I know.
Okay, we're coming up on six thirty. We'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. We'll start this in just a moment. Just a couple of quick reminders, and that is, there's not a problem if you want to leave yourself unmuted. It's just important that if you're going to leave yourself unmuted, try to remain quiet on your backside so it doesn't interfere with those who are trying to speak. Just remember also, if you are planning to speak or trying to speak, make sure you are unmuted from that standpoint. Also, just keep in mind that these meetings have, over the last few weeks, the country, not in Salado proper, but in other parts of the country, have been hijacked and have been taken over. If that happens to us in this situation, we will end the meeting immediately, deal with it from that point on. But so far, we've been lucky in this. So with that said, Mayor, at six thirty, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, and we'll get things started.
George Salado, Regular Board of Alderman Meeting, Salado Municipal Building, 301 North Stage Coast, Salado, Texas. It's April sixteenth, twenty twenty, six thirty P. M. The agenda, call to order, April sixteenth, twenty twenty, at six thirty P. M., call over.
Mayor, let the record stand that all members are present.
Let us star heads for the invitation. God, we thank you for this day, and what a beautiful day it has been. Sometimes we take the sunshine and the cool air, the beautiful green grass, and the flowers that are beginning to come to bloom. Thank you very much for the setting that you have given us this evening. And yet, Lord, we live in a very troubled world, a world that sometimes we can't understand, a world that sometimes has its own mind. And we pray, Lord, that there shall be an understanding, and that even though we may not have a perfect one now, that someday we will. We pray for the people who are sick, so sick, and for the responders who have been working for so long, and for the people who are in the grocery stores, and for the people in the town. Everyone that we can think of is head apart and us pulling together. Lord, we just give you thanks for these people and keep them safe. Give us wisdom tonight to make the right decisions and to do the right thing. I ask these things in your name, with all the faith that I have, that our country will be back to where it was soon. Amen. Let us, I'll tell you what, I can't stand here, but let us do the pledge of allegiance. But if you want to stand, it's okay. I just can't do it. But here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. There are not any, Don, there's not any citizen communications, are there?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. Does anybody out online want to speak at this point? That item's not on the agenda. None there.
Okay. Number two. A consent, approval of minutes of the Regular Board of Alderman Meeting of April second, twenty twenty. Approval of minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meeting of April sixth, twenty twenty. Approval of March twenty twenty financial statements for the Village of Salado.
Mayor, very quickly, I just want to note that we have one correction we'd like to make in the April sixth minutes, and it's on page two. At the top, where it says Alderman Bell asked if the public has had an opportunity to speak at this meeting, and that should actually read Alderman Cogan asked if the public had had an opportunity to speak. So with that said, everything's presented for your approval.
You want to include that? It's already being corrected?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Those should be approved.
For a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. George Administrator's report.
Yes, Mayor.
He's going to be talking about the wastewater project, the Main Street Improvement, Village of Solario Sales Tax, the COVID-19 update, and then the wastewater bond refunding. Don?
Mayor, members of the public, I want to run through several items. First of all, on the wastewater project. The process of connecting those unconnected properties on Main Street has slowed down. We talked about that at the last meeting. As a result of some staffing issues with local plumbers. They are indicating that slowly but surely their staffs are starting to come back on board, and we're expecting that activity to pick up in the next couple of weeks. So we are working with those individuals. Scheduling and planning for a Board of Alderman Workshop Item, possibly next, the next Board of Alderman Meeting, we're going to have a workshop item on there to discuss expansion of the sewer system with some of the remaining bond funds. You know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, Brooks Brothers and Salado Plaza and getting those properties connected as well as the library, in addition to those properties across the interstate. So we thought it would be important to maybe put this on there, show you the cost estimates we have for expanding this. These could be city-initiated expansions. The Brooks Brothers thing has been on the table for some time. And then our feeling is that with things beginning to wind down from a construction standpoint on that end of town, we need to look at doing something like that if we're going to do that at this point. So look for a workshop item on the next agenda to talk about this. The new wastewater bills are out, as we talked about. About forty-six percent of the customers actually saw reductions in their bills, about a twenty-five percent decrease in many cases, while the remaining customers saw actually an increase in their bills, an average of about twenty-one percent. That, of course, all based on water usage for the previous year. Proposals relating to the bond funding are due on April the twenty-first. I will tell you, a lot has transpired from when we adopted the Branders ordinance and now, and that is the fact that the banks have gone crazy. They've been ambushed, if you will, with people trying to apply for the PPP program. So a lot of those banks are tied up that would be interested in the proposals. We're still moving forward to look at an April twenty-first voting and to see what we get. If we don't get something that's satisfactory and then we're comfortable with, certainly that's to meet the Branders. It's possible we can go back out again. We've got a six-month window to do that. But the banks right now are extremely busy, very tied up in trying to go through this safety gap program that the government has provided for businesses. Main Street Improvement Project, they're making significant progress. So the point of the sidewalks continuing. Approximately a third of the ninety-six light pole bases have been drilled, and they're in the process of being poured at this point. Construction issues with the Rock Creek Bridge, there were some concerns that maybe the contractor had not built the railing according to the specs. They've gone back in and worked out an arrangement with Techside where they've gone in and modified the final design of that railing, and they've wrapped up work on that. It looks pretty good, you'll see. It's particularly on the east side of the bridge, and the railing that runs on the north side of the creek. The construction continues as far as drainage goes. They've got some minor drainage work left. They're actually beginning the process of looking at their calendars to try to schedule some asphalt overlay work. So they're making big progress, and then right now, if I point, if the weather holds, it's looking like an early completion date today in early summer. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on that. Those of sales tax collections, the April twenty twenty sales tax check is in, representing February sales in the village. It's almost some thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. It was down about eighteen percent from the same period last year, but I think it's important to understand that last year's data was inflated. It was inflated because of a significant audit adjustment. In fact, if you drill down the numbers and you look at actual collections between the two years, we were only down about two percent. So it was relatively flat compared to last year. The April twenty twenty check, in fact, was the second highest April sales tax check in the history of Salado. It was just last year was somewhat of an anomaly with the inflation as a result of that audit adjustment. Fiscal year to date, our sales tax collections total some three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Those are up about four percent from the same period. So fiscal year to date, sales tax collections represent about sixty-four percent of the FY twenty twenty sales tax budget, and we, of course, are at the fifty-eight percent mark in the fiscal year. We're going to be keeping the decline in sales taxes. Some of that, obviously, will be related as a result of construction. But again, we're really going to start to feel the impact of the last, and the upcoming couple of weeks, we'll begin to feel that in early summer as there's a two-month lag in the reporting of sales tax revenue. We'll talk about it in just a moment. As far as the COVID-19 response goes, the numbers have been updated in the county, a hundred and twelve cases to date in Bell County, with three deaths reported, and I believe seven reported recoveries. Right now, as of tonight, I think there are seven cases that are hospitalized. So most of the cases that we have that are active cases, they're recovering at home at this point. The hospital bed and ventilator capacity in Bell County is good. So we have enough capacity at this stage of the game for a surge, depending on the size of that surge. But right now, the area itself, the region itself, is pretty healthy as far as the hospital beds and the ventilator capacity is concerned. The peak in Bell County, as you know, is expected to occur in early May, not late April, but early May. And I wanted to let you know that we talk about a surge, and that is in our meetings with the county folks. They are working hard in the process to try to develop some alternate care locations in the event we do see a significant surge that fills the capacity. Again, right now, we have plenty of capacity and plenty of ventilators. That could change depending on the magnitude of the surge that's expected. The alternate care locations have been identified, both for regular customers as well as injured care customers. They're not anticipating having to activate those because, again, they believe they have adequate capacity based on what they're seeing as far as the curve is concerned, but they're planning to try to stay ahead. They do have a cot, they do have alternate bedding for these folks. They're senior citizens, for the personal and treatment hall, where those folks are going to need more than just a cot or something. They will need to be, need to order some hospital beds, and right now, they're comfortable that they have the supplies to stand up those alternate care locations if the need be. One interesting thing to talk about briefly about the hospital situation is, they're actually, from what we understand, there are actually some nurses being laid off at some of our area hospitals right now. And a lot of that is the result of the fact that those hospitals are not able to perform what's considered to be nonessential surgery, non-critical surgery, from that perspective. That was not a situation that was edicted locally. It was something that was actually an edict from the governor in one of his directives. And it's having a pretty widespread impact across the state as far as hospital staffing is concerned. So at this time, where hospital staffing is so critical, and then we talk about our first responders at the healthcare facilities, actually, some of those folks tend to be laid off because their normal business, which comes from elective surgeries and things like that, just cannot occur at this point. Will that change coming day? We'll talk about that momentarily. No real problem. Important as far as the local clients, they at home order. We have not issued any tickets. We've had a couple of oral warnings to folks who we've encountered in the parks and things along those lines. But for the most part, compliance seems to be good. We visit with, you know, our local grocery stores and things like that. It's important that they are very diligent and making sure that people are practicing social distancing. If they're not doing it, they need to make sure people are doing it, and we're going to be talking about masks, I think, in just a few moments. Our village parks remain closed. Again, compliance is somewhat good by considering the nice weather we've seen. City offices remain open to the public, and they're wiped down on a regular basis, and we're practicing the social distancing. Police officer and administrative staff have been and continue to take the necessary safety precautions when making contact with the public. Our PPE supply is pretty good as far as our local staff is concerned. We moved pretty quick and pretty early in the beginning to secure some protective gear, and we supplemented what we originally had with some donated items, which we received this in the last few days, some gloves, some masks, some hand sanitizer. We are staying in contact with the Chamber of Commerce to monitor their membership as far as the activities regarding local merchants. Those who are not members of this neighborhood, we're also trying to stay in contact with to feel for where they stand and what their plans are. Many of those businesses have got their names in line, some of the loan exits from the SBA. They're awaiting word back on some of that, but we're just kind of trying to stay in contact with those folks. Awaiting guidance from the governor and county judge regarding the opening of the economy. The governor has scheduled a news conference for tomorrow at twelve noon. The county judge's news conference is tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock. We believe the county judge's news conference will probably try to dovetail pretty much what the governor is going to talk about. I think what you're going to see in the few days, in the attempt to try to reopen things, is the world of face coverings is going to be enormous. And I think it could potentially even be required, you know, as some of these businesses begin the process of reopening. Dallas County today issued a full mask order. As you know, Travis County and Austin have those in place right now. San Antonio and Bear County are in the process of, so I think that's going to be kind of the trend for the nation as far as as people get out and about, and that is they want to try to get people out and about. But we're not at that point yet, you know, to totally, fully open things, and I think there's concern about those options. And so I think people are being, very likely in the near future, they will be required to be wearing masks as they go outside and venture out into the public, into the big box stores, into grocery stores and things along those lines. So I think if you don't have a mask yet or don't have a face cover, my strong advice is to get one, because I think we're going to be, we're going to be looking at that pretty soon. One of the fears, just so you know, on the reopening process is, and that is, as we begin the process of opening businesses, people out and about, they're very concerned about having adequate testing in place to be able to monitor any spread. In translation, if they start letting people out of their homes and getting back into the normal course of activities, they want to make sure that if the, if the number of patients start to kick up, that they have the ability to bring that down. They've got to have a monitoring system in place, and so I think there's some concern about that, but they're trying to work out the logistics of those. There are a number of issues relating to tests in Bell County, but they're not unique to Bell County, and it's not just really an availability of the test. There's a reacting agent that is not as available as it should be. There are other portions of the test that aren't as available as it should be. Everybody is playing well together statewide. There's some communication issues on the locals, but everything seems to be working, and everybody seems to be trying to move in the right direction along those lines. But I think you're going to hear a plan unveiled tomorrow by the governor that will give you an idea of what's to come, and of course, the county judge will follow with this direction as we fall under their emergency response plan. Word today that the PPE program is running out of money or has run out of money. As the SBA has indicated, they've stopped accepting the loans at this stage of the game. That's not a big surprise. As you know, there was a significant rush on banks as well as the SBA in trying to get the loans locked down to help protect the payroll and keep people employed. There's a supplemental funding bill that's kind of stuck right now that hopefully will come out. So you're going to be hearing more about that in the coming days. Again, we said in the beginning with this, that people need to move quickly, but they also need patience, because once you get your foot in the door, that doesn't necessarily mean you can start walking. So it's a significant impact. This is not just a community that's been hit by a tornado. This is a nationwide disaster, and there's more than just Texans trying to get this aid and benefit. There are people in fifty states trying to get this. So you're going to be hearing more about that, and the bill will continue to go up as far as how much money is going to be doled out. As far as how that capital funding is available for the villages of Salado Government proper at this stage of the game, right now, there are two opportunities that exist for this village. Neither of those opportunities are targeting the replenishment of any anticipated loss in sales tax revenue. But there is one program that could potentially result in the allocation of funding for some infrastructure improvements that the villages might need. As you know, we had some one hundred thousand dollars earmarked for capital improvements on streets and such budgets, and then with that potentially being a cut item with the effort to try to recover and try to lessen the impact of the loss in sales tax revenue, there could be some money coming down from the federal government in a competitive stimulus program for infrastructure. We know it's coming. The details of that program are still trying to be worked out as far as the application. It will be highly competitive. This is something that would be available for communities under five hundred thousand in population. There's the possibility to do some partnering with other government entities to try to maximize or to try to leverage your opportunity to secure that funding. And there are some projects locally we could be looking at that we'll be talking to you more about to find out more about what really can be funded through that program. Yesterday, the governor announced that I think some thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight million dollars worth of emergency funding was going to be freed up. Federal funding was going to be freed up for local governments. Sounds exciting, but when you start drilling down into that particular scope of funding, it really is something that's probably more catered to mid to larger community. Communities that have large fire departments, that run hospitals, that have, those type of things, where they had to keep into their budget, IP and P, where they had to go in and get three oversets. Your staffs have been sick. Mainly money that is earmarked for response and prevention-type activities. There is a compundit in there in the small businesses that we have some internal spending that we're looking at, but this is a federal funding that we would apply for through the governor's office for that. And like I said, we're researching the small business end of it, but other things, we're in pretty good shape right now at this stage of the game. Now, let me say this, and that is, if the war is on, we're potentially looking at maybe a resurgence in the fall, you know, heading into the winter. There may be a situation where we need to start going out to get more materials, more items, from a standpoint of our PPP and protection, and we may be looking to probably get it, it happens over time as a result of folks getting sick. But at this stage of the game, we're in pretty good shape from that standpoint. No program yet to replenish anticipated loss in sales tax dollars, as I mentioned. So at this stage of the game, we're looking at budget cuts, and we're keeping our ears open, and we're also, you know, working with the representative of the county, aware of our situation and our need. And he's on the lookout for funding for us too, as our folks at the cog bar and things along those lines. I feel you're going to have that boat, though, so you just need to keep that in mind. Again, we continue to curtail our nonessential expenditures. We've got our plan of attack as far as looking at the budget, bring back and to recover some of that money that we're anticipating losing. We're just hoping that, you know, we're not going to lose as much as we anticipated. I think we estimated a shortfall somewhere in the neighborhood, about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the report we gave you at the last meeting. And we'll update those numbers as we go on. I think I would want people to think that when you hear about reopening the, you know, those numbers about falling sales tax are not going to end up being the case. They will be the case. Trust me, it will be the case, because people aren't going to rush out to stores at this stage of the game, and you're not going to see a significant resurgence in local spending. I think it's just going to take time to get people to come out, realize that, you know, that they can do things safely provided they practice the necessary precautions. Mayor, that's all I've got as far as my report.
Questions, please, to Don, our comments?
Hey, Don, just a little bit. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ever.
I was going to say, because whomever is talking in the background, if we could get everybody to turn their mics off, because it's really hard for everyone else to hear, so, because we can hear a couple of conversations going on in the background.
Okay, so if you're not speaking, please mute, and if you don't want to mute, then you need to be extremely quiet, please.
Thanks.
Okay, Don, I got a couple of questions. This is Cole. Is there any update on the Royal Street and Sanctuary developments? Are they at hold because of the virus?
We've not heard anything in the last few weeks from them, John.
Okay, you mentioned earlier that the governor is still to talk. Is he going to address school systems reopening along the businesses? Or is that going to be a separate entity?
No, he will, he is expected to make some remarks about schools tomorrow, too. He was lobbied today by teachers' organization, trying to convince him that it makes no sense to reopen schools. You know, but what that decision will be, what he comes out with tomorrow, we'll just have to wait until we hear it.
Okay, one last thing, sir, is I'm sure you're watching it, but the Salado Plaza drive on, you know, behind, it's getting pretty bad shit by Brooks Brothers there. And I know we don't have the funding, but is somebody keeping an eye on that pretty close?
We are, we are, and we're asking scheduling a repair of that.
Okay, that's all I got, sir. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, please?
Yes, Don, back to the Sanctuary question. Have they started any housing or any kind of site work or any kind of work other than the photo op that we took out there?
Yeah, they've done some, they've done some perimeter clearing, but nothing significant, Mike.
Yeah, we heard anything?
No, no building permitted at this stage in January.
Hey, we heard anything back from the fourteen July letter we sent to the governor?
No, sir, not at this point.
That's all I have. Thanks, Don.
And I don't think Waco has either, just, and others. As we mentioned in an email, we were not the only ones who made that request. We were one of these fifteen communities across the state that made that request. Of course, we saw yesterday the court ruling that came down about rolling ballots and, you know, whether there would be a requirement as far as the age requirement, does that go out the window in a time of disaster? So there's a lot of discussion going on right now, about elections and who can vote and who can't.
Okay, I did have one more question, and that was on the lift station in front of Barrows at Rio Salado. You were going to get some bids. Have we got any bids on that odor reduction?
Not yet, but the engineer, the engineer is actually supervising it, so we're still planning to go after bids. You know, we've got wastewater funding available for that, and it would be, it's dedicated money that exists right now that we can only spend on waste.
Other questions or comments, please? First thing, Don, is what I'd like to do is to say thank you to you. Those morning and evening clips that you give us on what's happening in the community, what's happening in Austin and occasionally on Washington level, they were very helpful, really, really good. Thank you for getting those out. I notice sometimes you're writing at midnight, and that's, that's asking a lot out of you. Do you know when the president is going to make his remarks? Is it tomorrow?
Yeah, he did this this afternoon.
What did he say?
He outlined what his thoughts were and what his recommendations were as far as best advice for those states that were going to look at reopening.
Okay. Something that you might want to, to read came out on military.com from the Secretary of Defense. It's dated twenty twenty oh four fourteen. And that, he talks a lot about where the military is right now, what he's going to do, and how it's going to be done. It's not a long article, but it is a very good article. It may give you some idea on what is happening. I was talking at Hood today or with Hood today, and the people that I talked to said it's very quiet. There are not a lot is being said, so time will tell on that. Don, thank you for all that you've done. I hope you're taking care of yourself as well as your staff, because I know you guys keep it open all the time, so thank you.
We do, and we're practicing safe, safe. We've got one employee behind glass and another one behind the counter, and we're not, when we have staffing, we actually all sit in different parts of the room. And the one thing I would stress to, and that is, and we stressed this from the beginning, it's a marathon, and this is something we've not gone through in our lives, and it's new. It's easy to get frustrated with officials as they make these decisions, but I cannot tell you the significance that their actions to date have made on the spread in this county. Yes, we have cases, but we don't have the cases as other counties and other parts of the state do or other parts of this country do. But it is imperative that they continue to practice good hygiene, do not shy away from masks and face coverings. Everybody's doing it, but it's really, really important to do this, and I just can't stress that. And I know you get tired of hearing it, but the reality of it is, practices and make it part of your way of life. I think you said in your prayer, Mayor, that you hope that we get back to normal. We will never get back to the way it was. And I think it's important that we all understand, you know, we will never get completely back to where we were. There are going to be some lifestyle adjustments that are going to, that are going to be made, and they're all being made right now. And we just need to understand that the quicker we all get on board and practice the hygiene, cover the face, and follow that guidance, the better. I will tell you the other thing, I will say my one last bit of preaching here, and that is, try to turn off CNN for an hour and try to see something different, you know, than COVID. I think that's, that's something that you really have to make part of your daily routine, and that is get away from it for a while. And if it means getting out and watching an old baseball game, or if it means reading a book, do that. But break away from the news. Baltimore, it's, it's an onslaught that's going to, that's going to really cause some problems from a standpoint of long term, long term with folks, so break yourselves, please. That's it, Mayor.
Well, if you haven't, if you haven't read the Village Voice for this week, you need to, because it's front page, there's nothing but what people are doing in Salado to help each other. I don't know if Tim is listening to this, but it was an extremely good Village Voice. Someone had a question, please?
Yeah, this is Robbie. Don, in, in, I will use a news report to preface this. I saw where the number of tests for, per county, per thousand capita in Bell County was the lowest of any of the surrounding counties around here. Was there, has there been any comment from our health department or from any of our leadership representatives in the county as to why that number is so low, given that we probably have the highest population of any of the counties around here?
Rodney, it's actually, it's a regular topic of discussion and has been for the last couple of weeks in our, and what we're hearing from the health department, the response we get from the health department is the testing is taking place, but it's difficult for them to wrap it on. place, but it's difficult for them to wrap their arms around how many tests, because the reporting process that's established by the state, uh, is not prone to consulting in an accurate, uh, translation. We're hearing about other counties thinking those are accurate. They may not be completely accurate. Those numbers may be too low, or maybe too, you know, those type of things. Their, their comment is there's private lab testing going on, there's public lab testing going on. The, the reporting mechanisms for both, in the beginning, apparently were not consistent. Uh, and, and, and a lot of that data was being sent to Austin, not to the local county health department. Uh, so they're still trying, we ask that question every meeting we have, is can you tell us how many tests have been made? Because I, I think when you really think about this, I mean, it, it's a horrible situation we're going through, but you know, you have 500,000 cases, what, across the nation right now, more than that? Uh, but look at the entire population, Bell County, you have 112 cases in, in, in the entire population from that standpoint. The testing, I think, is critical to find out those numbers, and we're continuing to push on that, Rodney. But, but what we're getting is, the answer is, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of merging and, and obtaining accurate data from the labs, private labs, and then merging that with, with the public testing that's due in the hospital. I hope that helps.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments, please? Okay, number four. Consider approval of a resolution of the Board of Alderman on the village of Salado, Texas, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC's Encore R. Company, application for approval of a distribution cost recovery factory pursuant to Texas Administrative Code To increase distribution rates within the village should be denied, requiring notice of this resolution to the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, uh, this is, this is the annual, the annual county's discussion, uh, and that is Encore Electric has requested, uh, approval of the attached resolution that relates to their, uh, cost recovery factor increase. Uh, they're actually asking us, the company that's requesting the increase is asking us to deny the increase. And so with that said, I'm not gonna delve any deeper into it, because Carl Green from Encore just joined us on the Zoom conference, and Carl, I'll let you take it, and you can explain all the details.
All right. Thank you so much. Well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's safe, first of all. Uh, mayor, village council, city staff, uh, I'm Carl Green, Encore representative for the village of Salado. Uh, yes, I'll try to do a better job this time around. Uh, in a nutshell, Encore is a regulated entity, electric delivery. Any rate structure change has to go before the Public Utility Commission for approval, denial, uh, and so forth. At this point, what we're asking, the distribution cost recovery factor is a, it's an amount of rider to our regular rates that allows us to recover costs associated with infrastructure, upgrades, transformers, uh, some examples could be the substation that is, uh, on the east side of interstate as you come into Salado from the north. Uh, upgrades to that, uh, the treatment plant, the lift stations, conductoring our lines to accommodate additional loads and so forth. Uh, technology is a big part of this now, also too, now, where we are able to, uh, do some things, uh, that, you know, are, uh, newer and, uh, and help us keep safety and reliability, uh, concerns now, as far as that. But the, uh, the recovery factor allows us to recover some of those assets that we've incurred. And at this point, what we're asking, uh, is the average customer uses about 1,300 kilowatt hours per, uh, residential customer electric wise a month. The factor now is about 62 cents a month. What we're doing is we're asking Encore will go to the PUC and ask for an increase of about a dollar fourteen, where that would put that average about a dollar seventy-two per residential customer. Uh, what I wanna do is explain initially the background of the filing, and then kinda get into the premise about why we're asking for the denial. Uh, as I said, those costs are associated. You could take, for example, the new school, uh, we're, we're gonna be looking at the sanctuary. Uh, those folks are on our radar as far as our distribution planning, to kinda keep that in mind, uh, when that comes to fruition, uh, to be able to adequately serve whatever may take place out there, residential development. The village is coming back. There's some positive things going on. So we're, you know, we're looking at that and, uh, taking those things into consideration as far as assets and what we're doing in the Salado area. Now, uh, I'm gonna go through some points here, just kinda, uh, it'd be about a 2.3% increase that we're asking. Now, let's, I'll kinda delve into the reasoning for a denial. We serve about 410 cities in our footprint area. The, the premise is we, we wanna keep one uniform rate throughout our system, and currently that's what we've got. So going forward, it, it simplifies the rate filing. We ask all of our cities to deny it, and we go to the PUC, they ultimately make the final decision, whatever change in rate that may be. Historically, I've shared with Don that we go in asking for, uh, assets that we've invested complete, it's about a billion and a half dollars over the last three years. Now, we go in asking for a percentage of that to, uh, add to the residential base to recover those assets. And, and there again, as I said, historically, we know that that probably will not happen. They'll come in and they'll say, you know, you're asking for this amount, and we'll approve this amount. The reasoning behind that is there are a group of cities that have original jurisdiction, and they're guided by representation, uh, AOC, Alliance of Cities, and steering committee. They pool together and they have representation to go to the PUC and say, okay, we have gotten to this filing, we've looked at it, we think these portions should, should be disallowed. There'll be hearings, and that's another reason why, uh, we're asking for the complete denial of all our cities. It simplifies it, and you guys, as village, uh, although you're not part of one of these committees, you benefit from that, because these guys are going in saying, okay, this is good, this is not so good, we propose that you disallow this amount and so forth. As I said, there will be hearings at some point, and they'll, the, the PUC, which regulates Encore, will make the final decision, whatever that amount may be. Uh, that's the reason why we ask for all of our cities to go in with the denial. The options are to approve it as is, and those rates could be implemented immediately. Uh, you can, uh, take a resolution tonight, deny it, and no action at all, uh, within sixty days results in the same, a denial. So it simplifies it, it's one hearing versus having maybe the village, uh, Temple, uh, Dallas, going with different decisions and having separate hearings. It simplifies it cost-wise, and it's a, it's a one-time decision that covers everyone. As I said, the benefit in the end will be that everybody benefits from these other, uh, cities that have representation, and you guys would, you know, as I said, everybody will have come up with the same rate structure. There won't be a, we at one point had a catalog that was, uh, just probably four or five inches thick. Every city virtually had a different rate structure. This has kinda transpired over the years, the, the process of just asking for a denial. Everybody goes down to the PUC, one decision, and it's a done deal. So with that, I'll kind of end that, and then address any questions, uh, comments that you've got.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is Cole, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, so in short, if we deny this tonight, then we will, uh, there's a possibility we could fall in line with the rest of Texas, whatever, and, 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 and our rate would be established off the, off, off many, many cities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in a sense, our rates could go through the roof.
Well, this, this is a, it's a rider factor. Now, as I said, they won't approve any more than what we're asking for. I mean, there, there's not, as I said, this, the figure is, our figure is, for residential customer, 1,300 kilowatt hours, the increase would go from 62 cents to a dollar and, uh, 76 cents. That's about a 2.3% increase. That would be the total amount that you would see as far as this rate file.
So that would be a maximum?
That's correct. And I say, I, I, I don't wanna repeat myself, but historically, our rate cases, whether it's a full-blown rate review where our actual rates are increased for this factor, historically, the PUC, uh, I've not seen it to where they have agreed to our total amount. Uh, the disallowances have always been a factor, and they, as a routine, uh, history, they will not, and there again, I can't make that a guarantee, but historic wise, they don't approve the amount that we ask for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments?
Sir, we'd like to ask you a question.
This, this, this is Rodney. What percent of this amount makes up, um, I'm assuming we get a franchise fee back to the village from this?
Correct, correct.
What percentage of this charge makes up that franchise fee?
I guess I would address that is, the franchise fee is based on kilowatt hour consumption. That really wouldn't have, it wouldn't have an impact. That, that, that amount is not rolled into this, to this filing or factor. Does that, your franchise fee is a set amount, it's about 5% of what your actual kilowatt hour consumption is based on an annual, an annual total. This, this would not really have an impact on your franchise, and it's not, we're not, we're not able to recover or roll that into what we give, give to the city or village as, as a franchise. Does that help some?
Yeah, it does. So in the makeup of everything, we basically are, based off past performance or past practices, are giving up our right to negotiate our own rates.
That, well, that, that, you, yes, you can, that, that is correct. I mean, we're, uh, I guess the answer would be that with the denial, it, it goes to the PUC. Yes, now you, you have original jurisdiction. I mean, you're, uh, as far as the village goes, that's not, you still have that right. Now, you can, I, I'm, I don't know for sure, I'd have to probably check, but these groups, they're, they're called interveners, and they go to the hearings, and they voice their opinions and thoughts, and those are open public hearings. So I would say that as a village, if, if there was representation, they would not be denied to say, okay, this is our thoughts or opinions on this. But as I said, the benefit that you guys get is these guys are going to bat basically for everyone. Uh, there are about seventy cities that we have that don't, their original jurisdictions that don't have representation. A lot of the cities, they're, they have ceded jurisdiction, smaller communities and